Welcome to the Monday, February 5th, meeting of the Board of Alderman. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Several seconds.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the board on matters not on our agenda. First, we've been asked to hear from the Rutland-Hanamaki Student Exchange students, RISE students. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of that group? Welcome.
Hi.
If you could just tell us your name.
Yeah, my name's Amelia Kay and I'm a ninth grader at Rutland High School. This is our ambassador group for the RISE program this year, and we're all really excited to be a part of this program. They have each written a small paragraph about their interests and some of the facts about this trip. And without further ado, I introduce you to your first ambassador, Dean Carroll.
I'm going to be going over the expenses for the 2024 RISE exchange program. My name is Dean Carroll. I live at Rowland Town, Vermont. The expenses are going to be hotels, flights, food, and other expenses like the Tokyo Skytree, Mount Fuji, and the bullet train. Those are going to cost around $5,000 because there's seven of us that are going to be doing it, and a bullet train ticket costs around $125 per ticket. Thank you. Our next ambassador, Lucas Talbot.
I'm going to be talking to you about shodo. Shodo is a traditional form of art and culture in the Japanese. It's where you write words or other symbols on a piece of paper of black ink, and the way you make your brushstrokes, how hard you press it and stuff will define the way that your art piece has spoken to others. It can convey emotion and is a way to talk about peace, tranquility, and it's just a mindfulness practice. Our next ambassador is Lillian Osgood.
Hi, I'm Lillian. I live in Rowland. I'm an eighth grader, and I'm talking about like some of the manners they have like in Japan. So like if you make like an X symbol with like your hands, it's like a way of like saying shut up, or like it's like disrespectful, I guess. And like if like they, instead of like doing this when you bow, they do, like they have their hands down by their sides, and the longer you like bow and the lower you go, it's like more respectful. And those are just a few examples. Thank you. And the next ambassador is Maddie Hayward.
Hi, I'm Madeline Hayward, and I'm an eighth grader at Rutland Middle School. And I'll be talking about like places that we can take the Japanese students in Rutland or Vermont. And one of the ideas was Billings Farm because it's a nice like museum that is like about Vermont history. And then instead of like just museum after museum, I'm also thinking about the Killington for sightseeing, so they can like see everything about Vermont. And then the next ambassador and the last one will be Autumn Chaffee-Welman.
Hi, my name is Autumn Chaffee-Welman. I go to Rutland Middle School. I'm in eighth grade. I'm going to be talking to you about the places we want to go in Japan. The first place is the Hanamaki Regional Park, and second place is Meijinjin Shrine, and that is in Shibuya City, but those are the places we want to go there. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Alderwoman Taddeo.
Thank you all for coming and sharing with us some of your experiences and your knowledge. I was a RISE student in 2004, and so 20 years later, I'm still in touch with my exchange student, and I hope that we can cultivate lasting friendships on your trip coming up. Are you, are you coming up? Very excited. I hope you have fun.
Alderwoman Davis.
And when do you leave? June?
Alderman Gillum.
I was a participant. I went over with a group one time. We had a government exchange, and I was one of the officials that went, and it was very interesting. Are you guys going to go to the coast from Hakamaki? You're going to take you to the coast. I know they had some bands there last night, whatever the speed and plan, because you should go to the coast. We've got a real good holiday. Of course, it takes all day here. Please enjoy yourselves and make a lot of friends.
Alderman Kukle.
I heard someone mention $5,000. Is that per person?
That's for just like some of activities.
And are you fundraising?
Yeah.
And what are you doing for fundraising?
Base sales. We haven't started yet, but we're planning for one day base sale, Valentine's ice skating event.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Ethan Peppin from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, here to give us an update on the Rutland Regional Plan. Welcome.
So thank you for having me. I'll try to be relatively brief. We're sort of here going to every board in the entire region to try to raise awareness about the regional plan update we're doing. A regional plan is updated like every town plan every eight years, so we're aiming for a 2026 for the finished rewrite. Right now, we're sort of in the existing conditions phase. We're gathering information about infrastructure, housing, population, and also people's visions of the region. What do you see as our strength? What are our assets? What maybe needs a little bit more work? This is really all we're trying to gather right now. We're in that sort of information gathering phase, and we're going to take all that and put that together, start to develop the actual plan, which is a document. And we're also hoping that the final document is going to be, have a digital version as well, so it's not just going to be sort of a dusty book or PDF somewhere. It's actually going to be a living, breathing thing that you can click on online and you can access and you can interact with. So that's pretty much all I got to say. There's a survey you can take. You can go to our website, Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Love to get some more responses. We've already had a great city. We'll depart from that. That's all for me for now. We'll look to the future as we actually start to develop the plan and have something to actually put to you, the public. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, Kathleen Krevetsky, who's asked to address the board. Welcome.
Kathleen Krevetsky from Roberts Avenue. So I know this is, we have less than a month before the city will vote on the change in the bylaws of the charter, and that is March 5th. But there's some information that has not been out there, and I want to make sure that the public knows. We are using fluorosilic acid in our water here to fluoridate the water. Seventy percent of the fluoridation across the United States is also using fluorosilic acid. We object to that, and it is a hazardous waste, and we are suing the EPA over fluoride in general. And that trial is going on this week from 11:30 to about, it was actually 4:30 today, available on Zoom for the public. I have watched all four days in the past, the past, last week was three days, today was the first day, and its significant changes are going to happen based on what's going on there. And so what I would like to see the city do is get ahead of that determination that fluoride is associated with fetal brain injury. And that is going to come out. It's not saying it's causal, but it is associated. So what I would like to see this board on the next meeting come out and say whether you are for or against the charter change on the, what's on election day. So I think it needs to be public because I think it needs to be historical fact what went on here when we're looking past, when we're no longer here. So I'm asking you to put it on your agenda next time you're here, and let us know one way or the other on the record whether you're for or against what we're doing here in Rutland. And that way, well, the trial is only going till the 14th, but I'm not sure they have a result, but I've encouraged everybody to try to get in and see it, even just 15 minutes to watch, and you will get the story of what's going on with the EPA and the people saying enough with neurotoxins and other damaging chemicals in our system that they're going to have to address it. So the judge will be making that decision, which will give the CDC and the EPA their marching orders to take it out of the water. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Mr. Heck.
First of all, I'd like to say that as a host, we're getting ready to go to Japan. My son went, I don't know how long ago it was. He's 30 now, so it was quite a while, but I can tell you that our home is littered with gifts from the Japanese exchange students and stuff. Absolutely beautiful. The Japanese people are tremendous, and you will find out their culture and how giving they are. Matter of fact, city hall is littered with gifts from Hakamaki, well, prior to it got changed over and stuff, so culture is there, and it's something my son still talks about to this day at 30 years of age. So I hope you can appreciate the venture that you'll be going on because it will be life-changing for you, and have a great time and travel safely, okay? My name is Henry Heck. I'm here to just to let you know I will be running for the Board of Alderman, as well as Michael Talbot, Anna Taddeo, Eddie Grove, who's a newcomer to our community. Eddie's decided to throw his hat in the ring, as well as Sharon Davis, and Matt Whitcomb, I believe, are all the folks, and Bob Perrell. I had been an Alderman for three years prior to being city clerk for 14 and a half years. Things that go on in our city today are just, it's not the best. You know, there's a group of people out there, and it's interesting to find out back when I was there, call it Group A, Group B, Rutland Forward, non-Rutland Forward. It's a tremendous site, Michael Talbot. You've done a great job with that, that social media thing out there, the people that, you know, are part of the Rutland Forward movement and stuff. You've got a great message that's out there. I wish it was a complete message, but it is a great presentation when you take a look at it, and it's something to be proud of. And it was interesting, you know, when I worked with Matt Whitcomb, and I asked him, what is Rutland Forward? You know, what is it all about? And not disrespectful to Matt, he goes, you know, Henry? I don't really know, but they have a really good message, and it's something I want to be part of, and that's great. So message and information, Ms. Krevetsky here is passing along information, right, wrong, or indifferent, it's information that we can take and we can make our own decisions about whether we want fluoride in our water or we don't. You're going to get the vote on that. If you don't want fluoride in the water, that's got to then go to the legislature. Legislature's got to then approve it as a charter change, and then it will come into law and be enacted. A lot of people don't know that. They just think if you vote, this is what's going to happen. Michael Talbot's your board president. He just doesn't sit up there with a gavel and run the meeting. Michael Talbot also is a member of the Board of Finance. Michael Talbot's also a member of the Board of Highway. Michael Talbot will run tax appeals or tax abatements if he so chooses, so it's a pretty important job. Again, this is all part of the process and what people know.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Mr. Heck, Attorney Luchan.
Sorry. Mr. Heck, this isn't the place for politics in terms of talking points on this. If you have something to bring before the board that is of interest to the whole city in terms of interest, in changes, whether it's...
So Attorney Luchan, what you're stating to me is nothing I'm saying has anything to do or is not important to any other person out there?
Mr. Heck, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying this is not the time for politics. This is not the time for campaigning, and that is apparent to the board that that's currently what you're trying to do.
And this is part of the problem, okay? So everyone can witness this right here as far as that goes. You can either be told and you can be informed about what's going to happen in your community, or you can have people tell you that you can't speak, and you can't be informed. I don't think there's anything wrong here talking about, not being disrespectful to anybody. I haven't said anything to anybody. All I'm asking for is for information to be distributed the way it should be. The main reason I'm really here is to try and get people out to vote, because that's the number one thing. We're not voting, but people can sit back and play armchair quarterbacks and be unhappy about what's happening. If you get out and vote, you can change that, and they will vote, because I can tell you in November of this year, you will see 80% of this voting population will be close to 8,000 people that will come out and vote. It's on a national level, but what's going to happen in your community doesn't seem to be as important. And there's, there's no reason why I can't talk about what's happening, Attorney Luchan, in regards, the tax increase, the school increase, what the state's happening, and a reassessment. I will tell you right now that property values on a home will almost double when this is all said and done. Why not share that information? I think it's, it's, it's the, it is the exact right, and this is the forum and the place for people to come and share their opinions, whether you like to hear them or not. It doesn't always have to be rainbows and puppies. There's a lot of things going on out there that are not good. There's homeless people. There's crime. There's a lot of scared people. There's people that can't afford to live in their homes. These are all facts. So we can either work together, or we can continue to be separate and pretend like we're doing what's best for everybody. It's plain and simple. That's what the message is about. If you want to know what's going on, you need to ask a question. And then if you don't believe in that question, or you don't have enough information, just continue to get the information. I've seen people here throughout my 14 years come before this board and sit and talk without being interrupted and told they can't do that because the chair allowed them to do that. Plain and simple. There is no jurisdiction here that states what can and cannot be said. I'm not out here promoting myself. I introduced every candidate that was going to be moving forward or on the ballot that was going to be placed. So I'm really disappointed in the fact that you try and come here and do something positive, and this is how it, this is how it turns out to be. You can not be proud of that too, Mike. These are your people, okay? So I can tell you this, they're not going to be silenced. People have a question, they want to know the answer. They're going to, they're going to find that out, okay? So you want to know who created the digester problem? When it comes, Michael Talbot, Michael Dungus. Those are the two. Bob Protavanski had a vote. He voted it down. So when people ask you, how did this happen? Michael Talbot, Michael Dungus. Same thing with, you know, with taxes. It was the Board of Alderman. They're the ones who approved that budget that was presented by the mayor.
Mr. Heck, I don't mean to interrupt you again, but the board has not yet heard anything that it can take up to take action upon, and I respect that this is a time for people to share their opinions and what they would like to see happen in the city. But at this point in time, all we've heard so far is you discussing particular individuals and their actions, and the actions of this board, and this is not the forum for that. We respect your right absolutely to express your opinion in the appropriate manner and at the particular time and place. The purpose of these public hearings at the board and for public comment is to bring to the attention of the board matters which it can act upon and hear the concerns of the citizens of the city.
So what you're, what I think I heard you say was that unless there is an action that is requested, you cannot speak before this board unless there's an action that needs to be derived from that.
Not specifically, however, most people bring interest in things to the board that the board could take action on. You don't have to have a particular action in mind. It could be a concern about the city in general. However, personal attacks on other people, this is not the forum for that, sir.
Did you say personal attack? Are you, are you commenting that I am personally attacking other people?
It clearly sounds like that.
I just want to make sure. I just want to be clear.
You are clear, calling out particular individuals on their actions, and this is not the forum for that, sir.
First and foremost, any vote that's taken is public information. There is nothing here that's been discussed that's private deliberative session, nothing. Do you understand? Nothing, okay? You may be an attorney, and I respect that fact. What I did for 14 years, you have no idea what I know about how things work within this building. I'll make that perfectly clear. These people right here came and shared something that wasn't an action? You didn't say anything to them about that, did you? So let's be clear. What's good for the goose is not necessarily good for anyone else. If you want to hear it, it's fine, but if you don't want to hear it, then you're going to just shut everyone down and not say a word. I'm letting you know right now that's not how it's going to be moving forward. And I can attest to you, if I'm sitting in this seat at the, after this next election, I'm going to make sure that every question that needs to be asked will be asked, because the people want to know, plain and simple. And that's just how it's going to be. I'm disappointed that that's the position that you're taking as a law official, I can tell you that as well, because, Michael, you are not getting the precise and right legal counsel as far as that is, just so you know that too, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Good evening.
Mike, I think they want to leave.
Okay. Give you everybody an update on what's kind of been going on. It's been a long time since our last Board of Alderman meeting. It will not take a long time to tell you the updates. So we have a new HR director in Rutland City, or here at Rutland City, to be more specific. Her name is Ellen Coyle. She started today, and we're very grateful to have her. In the same vein where Ellen started today, last Friday, our, our previous DPW commissioner and our city engineer, Jim Rotundo, retired after his long tenure here at Rutland City. So I want to make a public thank you. Jim couldn't be here tonight, but he, he understood that we were going to make mention of this tonight, so I just wanted to make a public thank you to Jim for all of his time, all of his efforts. A lot of the reason the city looks as beautiful as it does, and the roads work as well as they do, and the plumbing works as well as it does in our city is because of the efforts that Jim has put in over his many years here. So thank you very much to Jim. With that being said, what you'll see is over the next few months, Ted Gillum move from the associate engineer now to the assistant engineer, and as soon as Ted has his PE, his professional certification, we'll be looking at Ted to move into that city engineer role. In the meantime, I will likely in the next meeting or two be appointing a interim city engineer. Our charter requires that that city engineer has that certification, so we'll be appointing somebody interim to check our work and stamp the products as we move, you know, the products coming around the engineering department as we move forward. In other news, the OEO grant, which is that, that's the Office of Economic Opportunity, that's the grant that you all approved us applying for a few meetings back, has been approved, and we have processed that paperwork, and we should be receiving a few further instructions on how to use that soon. We do have a job description that we're writing right now. I've actually spoken to a couple people in this community that kind of run these things, so people like Tom Donahue and Angus, who can really help us build that job description for that homeless transition coordinator. So that job description will be coming out soon, and I'll make sure we send that out to the board so you see what we're working on there. Public outreach this week, last week was very busy. Spent a lot of time talking to a lot of the owners of property in our community, talking about what they want to be doing to kind of reinvest in Rutland as we grow. We have these targets for growing housing in Vermont, 1,000 units over the next 10 years, right here in Rutland specifically. Growing, there's a group called the Vermont Futures Project. They are a spinout of the Vermont Chamber of Commerce, and Vermont Futures is focused on a population growth in our state over the next 15 years to bring us to 802,000 people in the state of Vermont. And that seems like a pretty, you know, difficult goal to hit, but they're not really afraid of that challenge. As we're seeing movement throughout the country as people are leaving other states and looking to move north, and, you know, we're seeing everything from climate refugees to people that just want a different lifestyle, Vermont wants to capture that. So Vermont Futures Project's target of 802 people is 135,000 people over a short period of time, but Rutland would love to be a part of growing their population, and so we'll be working with them. There was a great presentation from them hosted at the Hub, I think it was last week, and if you haven't had time to check them out, you can check out the Futures website and download their documents and presentations, and that's what they gave to us. Actually hoping to invite them back here soon to do a presentation for Rutland City specifically. Today, we did Mondays with Mike at Lus Luna. A lot of people came. We had conversations on everything from fluoridation to disinfection byproducts, to what's going on with policing in our community, how are we managing things like traffic safety? The conversations have been great, lots of questions. Larry, you missed this one. That's okay. We'll, we'll get you back next time. But the conversations have been really good with the community, and people have gotten a lot of answers. Even, even some of my neighbors, a gentleman who lives right across the street from me showed up because he felt that was a great way to sit down and have the conversation. So love doing that. I did get the opportunity to go to Montpelier and speak on House Bill 534, and that is the retail theft bill. But I didn't speak alone. The mayor from Burlington also testified on the bill, and so did our state's attorney, Ian Sullivan. And what this bill does is it takes many misdemeanors. So if you have three or four or five misdemeanors over a certain period of time, it gives the judges the opportunity to combine those into one case and into one charge. That does a couple of things. One, it holds those, committing those, you know, acts accountable in certain ways that they wouldn't be able to before, but it also consolidates the caseload, right? So where we looked at back at the beginning of my term here, we looked at 2,200 case backlog, then it was down to 1,800 this summer. Now we're at 1,400. That's a great amount of cases that we've worked through here in Rutland City, sorry, in Rutland County, but there's still a lot to go, and this would really help us consolidate those and get those cases processed on a faster, faster rate. Couple other quick things. We'll be continuing that advocacy and being up there at Montpelier. The next thing is kind of on the docket are Act 250. So Rutland may want to look at Act 250 differently than, say, Mendon or Chittenden. We may want to look at it differently than even, you know, maybe if you look at like Polton, they're going to have a different perspective on it. So we need to advocate for what we need here. The really cool thing about this, if you dug into this at all, is the state has been looking at this too. There are three different avenues we can take with Act 250 right now, and all of them could benefit Rutland. So we're really going to be focused on that, along with those partners that we have in the community like the Cedars and the Housing, the Housing Trust and such. So those developer meetings will, and conversations will continue around that, and I think that's a, we're moving in the right direction. I want to give you a quick handout. We got a little bit of a data bill. Could you pass those around? This is nothing, nothing that you need to make a decision on, but this is information. If you all remember, this summer, we had the opportunity to do something fun with one of the crosswalks on Merchants Row. We painted it a little bit different. We brought the lanes in. We put up bollards. If you look at the green bars on your chart, and I'll see if Peggy TV can maybe zoom into this. So the green bars on the chart, these are the, this is the vehicles and their speeds during the time that we were running that test. And if you look down below, that's the speed. So you can see that the average speed was 12, 13, 14 miles an hour while we were running that test. If you look at the red bars, you can see that after the test, when those went away, the average speed was 25, 26, 27 miles per hour in the tiny little corridor on Merchants Row. You can even see, if you actually look deeply at the data and it doesn't show it on this chart, and this is an eye chart too, it's very tiny, but you can see that people have traveled up to 45 and 50 miles an hour through that stretch of roadway. It's very unsafe for pedestrians when they're going that fast. So first of all, I'd like to ask anyone who's going over the speed limit in that stretch of roadway to not do that. We have a children's museum right there. We have offices. We have people working there all the time. I'd ask that you respect the speed limits in our city anywhere, but especially right there where there's constantly kids and others in that area. But one thing I do want to say is thank you to those that put the effort in to show that we can actually slow traffic down through there and make it a safe environment. There's no reason, there's two traffic lights right there. There's no reason people need to be speeding through there. So we're going to take a look at some next steps. We're going to work with the Regional Planning Commission, and thank you for Ethan for working on this and putting this together. But we're going to work with the Regional Planning Commission to look at what those next steps are and how we can maybe do that again this summer and see where we can go from there.
Alderwoman Davis.
So I don't know if Ethan can answer your, the mayor.
Sure.
So with the increased speeds, do you know what time of day, were they at night, rather than, I guess I find it hard to do 45 miles an hour here when you've got cars on both sides, you know, people are... sides, you know, people are walking, things like that. The lights are not succinct, so you can get a green, but then you get a red, so, and I don't know if, you know, if that's something that you can pick up to see if there are times and nights when people are just flying through, the lights are red, they're flashing, and people are just going, you know?
Yeah, actually, I can answer. That's, that's pretty much exactly it. I had the same thought. I look and it's all very late at night when there's really nowhere on the road, so it's unclear if people might even be running the light, so they're not taking their blasting right through. Anecdotally, I know that people love to rip through their cars because the sort of cavern created by the buildings makes the sound echo off, so. My, my working theory is that people like to take their sort of souped-up cars and rip through that section and sort of make the engine really make loud and it's like you're going off there. So I haven't seen like 45, 50 miles an hour during that.
During the day, right.
12, 31.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we, that's a great point. We do have the data, and we can run the time of day calculations on it.
Right, because you want to see workdays or during like the 8:00, 5:00, or whatever time it is, that there is a better speed control to speed where we're at.
Absolutely. And we can, we can do that, so we can put together the chart, the before and after. So I'll do that for next time, I'll send it out to the board. It's a, it's a good question, you're welcome.
It's also worth mentioning that there may not be very many people crossing the road at that time of night, but the lighting is really poor downtown, and it's difficult to see anybody at night.
Yeah, it's very.
Another crack of the light.
Alderman Gillon?
You probably should also mention that the cops have not been around for a while, but all of a sudden, there's a huge presence out there because lately, they're on 4:00 and 7:00, they're downtown, they're, they're out there now, so a warning to people out there, they're going to start pulling people.
Yeah, we are, we are running our shifts back closer to normal levels. Emilio is back downtown, so absolutely, make sure you're following, you can't, you can't get away with not following the rules anymore.
That's correct.
If that's what you're saying, Alderman Gillon.
That's what I answered.
Next Mondays with Mike will be on February 26th. I'll post the updated where we're going to have it on the website, and that's it for tonight. Awesome, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda, and if you'd like to step out, you're welcome to do so. We have five special event permits on our agenda. I'd entertain a motion to move those to the top.
Second.
All right, are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving the special event permits to the top?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. First, we have a special events permit request for Cold Roll Rutland to be held on February 11th. There's a copy of the permit application on pages 23 to 24 of your packet. Shelley Lutz is making her way into the podium. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Shelley Lutz from Clarendon, and just here to say hi, and appreciate you guys maybe approving the permit for Cold Roll, which is Sunday. It's not going to exactly be cold, and I'm not sure how much snow we're going to have left, but the event's going to happen, and you guys should come and check it out, you know? And I'm, yeah, so anyway, questions?
Alderwoman McClure?
I was just wondering, are there going to be fat bikes available for rental or try-on for someone who might not necessarily already have one?
Yep, and then some of them might even have a little bit of a e-assist, so you have to pedal, and it'll make you go up those hills a little bit easier. So yeah, the recommendation would be to call Ranch Camp, Base Camp, or Green Mountain Bikes and reserve a bike, and they'll have regular pedal bikes and an e-assist bike, which you still have to pedal to make it go forward.
Alderwoman Tadio?
I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then a motion to approve the special event permit for Cold Roll Rutland, the Fat Bike Festival on February 11th at 10:00 AM, second in Pine Hill Park.
So we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded, Alderman Kupali?
Yeah, I see, I see a price of admission, $75. Can you explain that?
Seventy, so, sorry, there's noise, my ears are clogged, and I heard $75, but what was the question?
Yeah, I'm looking for an explanation for the, for the price of admission.
Oh yeah, so registration, but that gets you, gets you some homemade treats, it gets you some fiddlehead beer, and it gets you some burritos at the end of the ride. But the beer, Larry, you have to get on a bicycle and you have to come find me up at the overlook, because it's not down in the parking lot. So, little, a little bit of a carrot there for you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the permit?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the special event permit application for the Shiver Me Sham Rocks 5K to be held on March 16th. There's a copy of the application on pages 25 to 26 of your packet. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carrie Allen from Heritage Family Credit Union. Shiver Me Sham Rocks has been taking place in Rutland City since 2014. Unfortunately, we were impacted by two years of COVID. Actually, our race was scheduled for Saturday, and the governor made the announcement of the emergency closure of the state the day before, and we had to make the really hard decision not to hold our event. The first five years, all of the proceeds went to Wonderfeet Children's Museum, and we were really excited to be able to add a display of a credit union in their village within the, within the museum. And we're in year three where proceeds are going to Come Alive Outside. So Heritage Family Credit Union underwrites all of the event, and all of the race registrations plus some donations go towards our benefactor.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Thank you so much for your work, really appreciate it. And then a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillon?
No, that was going to do something.
And then a motion to approve the special event permit for Shiver Me Sham Rocks on March 16th at 8:00 AM till 4:00 PM.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded, any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a special event permit application for the Third Annual Whoopee Pie Festival to be held on September 14th. A copy of the application is on pages 27 and 28 of your packet.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crispin White, I'm Member Services Events Manager for Cedar, and I'm here with Lyle Jepson, Executive Director. And we want to just share information about the Third Annual Whoopee Pie Festival, which will be held on September 14th of this year. But we want to go back and talk a little bit about last year's event. We brought in over 4,000 people to downtown Rutland. It's a family-friendly event. We have activities for kids, adults, all kinds of things, and, and one thing we did also bring in is the Red Trouser Show from Boston, which created wonderful performances for all the people who were there. We are making sure that we work with our community partners, so we had a large number of community service agents down there as well, so they can share information about resources that they have available for community residents. And we also had a very large media presence, presence, WCAX, Catamount Radio, WMUD, Rutland Herald, Mountain Times, and we also had some great news reports that were run on WCAX and WPTZ prior to the event. So we want to make sure that we bring and highlight what can go on in Rutland, Vermont, and especially in downtown Rutland. So what we are looking to do also this year is create, hopefully, the second largest Whoopee Pie in the world. The first year, we had Dream Maker Bakers create a 542-pound Whoopee Pie. Last year, their goal was 700 pounds, and they exceeded that by going to 770 pounds. And this year, they're hoping to create a 900-pound Whoopee Pie, which will get them closer to the record of 1,062 pounds. So next year, we're shooting for the record. So you might be asking, what do we do with leftover Whoopee Pie? And what we did is we made arrangements prior to work with Dream Maker Bakers. They create, they helped us get some sheet cake boxes. And we worked with Brock, and they allowed us to put all the leftovers in their refrigerator and freezers that Saturday evening, and the following Monday and Tuesday, I delivered all the leftovers to the Open Door Mission, United Methodist Church, Vermont Farmers Food Center, and a lot of other different locations whose clients could benefit from these leftovers. So that's something we're going to be doing again next year, and we're going to do more locations because we'll have a 900-pound Whoopee Pie. So what we're doing today is just coming to you to ask for support again. You've been so gracious over the last couple of years. This will be our third year, and we were hoping to get the same support from Rutland City. And, and this is an event that pretty much does a lot of things for the city of Rutland, similar to what Come Alive Outside does, the Rutland Rec, Downtown Rutland Partnership. It's to bring excitement and highlight the positive things we can do within the city. So we're hoping to get your support.
Alderman Gillon?
Move to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the permit for September 14th, the Whoopee Pie contest, Whoopee Pie Event, second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the permit, it's been seconded, any discussion or debate? Alderman Gillon?
And it says it's free admission here on here, so it's free to go.
It is free to go, but in, in order to get samples, we are going to have over 12,000 Whoopee Pie samples this year, because by 3:00 o'clock last year, we ran out of samples because we had so many people in downtown Rutland. So we're working with our Whoopee Pie vendors to increase the number of samples that are offered, and again, we'll have the leftover 900-pound Whoopee Pie.
All right, seeing nothing further, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
May I jump in just for a moment? Now that this has been, this deal has been sealed. Crispin sends me in to ask for money, so.
No, you're kidding.
But before I do that, I do want to thank all the different partners that come to play in this event. It could not happen just by us at Cedar doing this. We have Rutland Rec, we have Danielle at Wonderfeet Kids Museum, we have Tiffany from the Downtown Partnership, we have Arwin Turner from Come Alive Outside and all the things that are happening there, and of course, the financial support of our business community and you folks. And in the past, the mayor's office, no pressure, has provided a $5,000 donation towards the Whoopee Pie Festival, which almost matches $1 per person coming downtown, which is pretty good. So we'll be working with the mayor to see if that's possible again this year, but we want to thank you for your support because it could not happen without you. And many of the things that are on this sheet of paper, may I pass something out?
May.
Would not happen without your support as well, and so that can go that way and that can go the other way. This is a two-year look back at economic development activity through our office. Would love to have an invitation to the Economic Development Committee at some point, just to talk about some of the things that we're working on and that you're working on and that we can both work on together. A lot of this needs explaining. I didn't come here to explain any of this, other than to pass it out so that you could see some of the things that have been happening over the last couple of years. So, I had to do some advertising, Michael, sorry.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Sorry, just to clarify, are you looking for a motion to give a presentation to the community and Economic Development Committee?
No, you can just invite us, we'll come.
Okay.
We would need a referral.
Okay, so, well, I would move to refer this to committee so that I can invite you.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to refer, it has been seconded, any discussion on that referral? Alderman Gillon?
I would suggest that we do it over at the Hub, because I think some of you people have not been there yet, and it would be good to see what's going on there now, because I'm there every week with the Rotary Club, and there's a lot more activity there now than there was last year. So things are happening. Well, and thank you to this board, who in the past provided $400,000, I'll keep reminding you of that, as a match towards a grant that we received from the EDA. We could not have received that match without, the grant without your support, so thank you. It's open whenever you want to come, sorry.
So all those in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have a special event permit application for the Wonderfeet Truck or Treat Event to be held on October 20th. A copy of the application is on pages 29 to 30 of your packet.
Hello? Hi. So there will actually be a second events permit coming your way as well, so I'll just talk about both of them right now. So the two events permits that we applied for, the first is for Wonderfeet's official grand opening and ribbon cutting on May 11th. That will mark one year that we have been in the Green Mountain Power Energy Innovation Center, so we thought, what better way to celebrate than to throw the most epic first birthday party ever? So we would like to close down Merchants Row and make this event free for the community. There will be children's musicians, there will be a magic show, balloon animals, snow cones, cotton candy, face painting, the Red Trouser Show, which we did steal from the Whoopee Pie Festival, all sorts of street entertainment, trucks for the kids to look at, and the museum will be open for free. So that event will happen May 11th from 10:00 to 2:00 on Merchants Row. Like I said, that event is free for the whole community, so we hope that lots of families come out and celebrate with us. It's going to be a really big party. The second event permit that we have there is for Truck or Treat, which will be on Sunday, October 20th. We held that event for the first time this past year. We had over 3,000 people downtown on Center Street and Merchants Row. We had over 35 unique big truck vehicles there, all handing out candy, all letting the kids get up and explore the trucks. It was an awesome way for the business community to get involved with the museum and be able to get kids excited about trucks. And honestly, that wasn't that hard to do. But if you got to come to the event, and I know some of you, I did see downtown that day, we had the Belden Crane right in the intersection there, flying a big ghost over downtown. The Army Reserve was there with the Humvee, and they had skeletons over Center Street. It was just a really fun event, and it's something that we're hoping to build on year over year. So in this second year, we're actually extending our request to have two blocks of Merchants Row plus Center Street, because we'd like to have over 50 trucks this year. The last thing I would like to say that I included with you guys tonight is an impact report for the year of 2023. Many of you were on the board and approved our request for $150,000 from the city's ARPA funds, so just want to give you some highlights of what that money was able to provide this year. Obviously, the beautiful new space, but with that, we had over 20,000 regular guests through our door. That's paying admission or using a Wonderfeet membership. In addition to that, we saw over 10,000 guests at free community events. We have this year our highest number of member families ever, over 400 member families. 150 of those families qualify for low-income, reduced-price admissions, and so those families are getting to experience the benefit of a year's worth of visits to Wonderfeet for just $25. So that's an amazing gift we're able to give back to the community by having community support that helps keep our admissions low and affordable for everyone. So those numbers that you're seeing there, please remember that those also reflect two months where we were closed for construction, so I'm really excited to see what we can do with 12 months in this building. We are regularly reaching our capacity and having to put guests on a waitlist almost every weekend. So what we've learned in the past year is that we could never have guessed quite what the need and desire was in this community to have this type of family-friendly entertainment in that tiny space that we were in previously, and seeing the response to the community more than tripling our traffic in one year has been amazing, and I just want to thank you all, because it's very clear how much the community really needed this and how much they genuinely appreciate having it here.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Thank you so much for your work for the community, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I would like to move to approve the special event permit for Wonderfeet Truck or Treat on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at twelve P M. till four P M. on Merchants Row.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the permit. It has been seconded. Alderman Gill?
Just so the public knows, that these are both happening on Sunday, am I correct?
Uh, Saturday, May eleventh, and Sunday, October twentieth.
So, May eleventh, you talked to the farmer's market, so there's a coordination going on?
Correct.
So, there's gonna be less parking, so we'll have to work that out.
Yeah, but we're trying to kind of get everything to sort of flow together so that.
So, we're all working with the farmer's market. Perfect. Thank you.
Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the birthday celebration? We have to do that one too.
We approve both together?
Do we need to? Ribbon cutting.
Uh, I thought we only had.
But we don't have the application in front of.
Yeah.
Oh, is it on our desk?
Do you want to make another motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
One more time, I couldn't hear. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and I'll move to approve the Wonderfeet ribbon cutting and birthday celebration on May eleventh at ten A M. till two P M. on Merchants Row.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the second Wonderfeet permit, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, we will.
Now, we'll move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, and first up, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request for adoption of revised municipal codes and policies. There is a memo and supporting documents on pages seven to fifteen of your packet.
That's a lot of walk. Good evening. So, in order to receive federal and state grants, municipalities must adopt these policies and codes, and the city did so in 2019, but since then, there have been policies added to the list. I highlighted those for you so that you could see the difference between the 2019 document and the document before you this evening. So, I'm just respectfully requesting that you circulate for signature the last page of these policies and codes and adopt them this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I just have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Oh, I was just gonna move to circulate the document for signature to adopt the new policies and codes that have been updated since 2019.
Second.
Very good. Alderwoman Davis?
And this is just because we're an equal opportunity employer. Okay.
All right, any discussion on the motion to adopt and circulate for signatures? Alderman McCann?
Thanks. Looking at the last item highlighted here, the accessibility and five oh eight compliance requirements, the last line says, let's see, "Further, the municipality shall consider accessibility of any materials produced via or related to federal funds and implement accessibility measures." That has the potential to kind of have like wide-reaching impacts in terms of the stuff that we put out online, via PDF, things like that, which I think is a good thing, so just we'll want to be mindful of that as we go forward. So, it might be difficult just to track all those dollars, and it might be easier just to move towards making everything compliant. That way, it's, you know, accessible to those people who need it, and we're complying with the requirement here.
Very good. Any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, and I plan to get a copy of this to the new H R. person as well.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Recreation Superintendent Peters here with information about Winterfest, and there's a flyer on page sixteen of your packet.
Yes, so I'm gonna turn the mic over to Rudy for, from Come Alive Outside and to answer any questions and give some highlights of Winterfest.
Hello, everybody. My name is Christian Rudy. I'm from Come Alive Outside, just to give some updates about Winterfest. So, Come Alive Outside has taken the lead on Winterfest this year, and we have thirty-three different activities that will be going on, and we will be partnering with all kinds of different people from around town. Some of the things that we have coming up include some of the past favorites like snow carving, the chili cook-off, the Center Street sledding, human foosball, the Real Rutland, and Dance at Wonderfeet. One of the big changes, or a couple of the big changes that we're making this year, is that there's gonna be a teen track this year, which was made possible from a Region Two V P L O. state grant that we got, which will allow us to do things that are targeted at specifically teens, which has been one of our focuses to kind of access that age group. And some of the activities that we have for that include a human foosball that's specifically for teens, a blacklight nerf battle, a teen dining club, some camp cooking, a shield workshop, and all kinds of other fun activities. And we also are adding a mobile component to it where you can download an app and track your activity through all of the teen activities and earn prizes by doing so. So, my purpose of coming here today is just to kind of get everybody a little excited for Winterfest, and yeah, so it's gonna be a good time.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Alderman McCann?
I'll just make a comment. This lineup looks awesome. You guys are doing a great job getting stuff together to get the community engaged. I really enjoyed, or like, I'm excited about the teen track. I mean, we've heard that a number of times, that, that we need those opportunities, and it's great that you're kind of being intentional about including that, and I'm looking forward to trying my foot again at foosball.
I had a feeling you were gonna say that, yeah.
I'll see you on the field.
I think you probably will. I might be the ref this year, so. Yeah, but I appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Superintendent Peters is up again with updates on activities and rentals at the city's recreation facilities.
You know, tonight was such a great example of collaborations, right? I mean, we have Cedar here, Wonderfeet, Come Alive Outside, and, you know, the recreation plays a part in a lot of that, but it is crucial to have all these partners. And I want to first thank Cedar, we have some, a lot of events coming up at the REC Center, and I, I shared that with you, some new events. We're expecting conservatively seven thousand to ten thousand visitors just from the events coming in. So, I had reached out to Cedar and asked for a summary of places to go, places to eat, activities, and within hours, Olivia sent that over to me, and we send that out to every organization, point of contact that we have. That way, they know, because we get a lot of visitors, the, the events that we have coming this weekend are events that are statewide, so we have people coming in from all over the place. So, the collaboration, the partnerships are really crucial for us being successful as well. Just this weekend, I just want to mention a couple of things that we have going on. We have, on Friday night, we have the DJ skate at Giorgetti. Friday night, we're also hosting Night to Shine event. The information on the event is in your packet, and it's a Tim Tebow Foundation sponsor nationwide. This will be our third year sponsoring this for Night to Shine. I know most of, or some of the P D. will be there and along with FIRE to help with that event. Saturday, we have Rahah games going on throughout the day. Those are again, are, we have teams coming in from all over Vermont and New York for those, for the games. On Sunday, we're hosting the youth wrestling state tournament again. We're really excited about that and stone cold, as Shelley was saying. So, this weekend is filled with a lot of events. This week, though, we also are opening our summer camp registration starting tomorrow. We did a mock registration last week, and we had a great response. We did that, one, because we have an entirely new system, point of sales, and we did not want parents not being able to register their kids. So, we had about a hundred and ten, our max capacity is one forty-five, so we feel really confident going into tomorrow with that. I also had just sent through all of our indoor turf happenings. That registration has started. Most of those events are, programs are at Giorgetti, and we added a couple of new things. We have a co-ed soccer league that's, that's coming. We've had some interest in that, so we're taking registrations for co-ed soccer, eighteen and older. The last thing, just a couple, probably the next time I'll come talk to will be summer stuff will be the, the next, the next big update. But just looking at some of our new events that we have, and a lot of these were, we, we received of word of mouth because of the events we have been hosting at the REC Center. But a new one that we have coming that we're really excited about is the National Wild Turkey Federation Vermont State Chapter. It's their annual banquet fundraiser, and I know with this board, you're gonna ask me what that is, so I included right off their website exactly what it is because I was also interested. What happened is that they've become so big, so large, that the, the facility they were at, they've outgrown, so they reached out to, to us. La Valley's is coming back. They did a huge expo last year, and one of the challenges we had is that we don't, we didn't, we don't have tables. So, they are actually donating all of the tables to the REC for us to have for future events. That really is gonna help us provide care, provide better events, and be able to have those type of events. So, I'll have more information, a formal thank you, when we receive the tables, but we just received that last, last week. And then the last event I want to mention that's new, it's called MedQuest. You may have seen advertisements on Facebook. This is also a, an event where vendors are gonna be there. It's gonna be an expo, and again, they're gonna need tables, so we're excited that we can say now we're gonna have tables. And the tables, we need about eighty, comes about ten thousand dollars. So, it was a huge purchase that we could not, that we could not afford, but we asked and we got, so we're excited about that. All of this also, you know, goes to economic development. When I, when I sit down and look at the events that we're having, you know, we're estimating between seven to ten thousand just of outside visitors coming in. Daily, we have a hundred to a hundred and fifty people just walking through the REC Center. So, at some point, you know, understanding how that impacts, you know, economic development in general with the, the, you know, the events that we're bringing in, specifically youth events, so I think that's all I have for now.
Alderman McCork.
I just want to say thank you for coming before us with this list. What really caught my eye here is just taking a look at the DJ skate nights thing you had mentioned. Over the weekend, maybe Alderwoman Tadia can attest to this, I was reminiscing of the teen skate, the Wednesday and Friday night teen skate that the arena had when I was, I was a teenager, and it's so good to see that coming back. It's so good to see it with the DJ this time, too. That makes it even more fun. So, thank you so much for everything that you guys are doing. This is amazing.
You're welcome.
Alderwoman Hooker?
Thank you, Kim. I'm really pleased to see the numbers of people who are participating in these events, and I know that last year, you talked about the concern that there wasn't enough housing for people who are coming to, to town.
Yeah.
Do you find that that's impacting the events?
Well, there is one, there's two big events that we could have hosted, however, yes. So, I, that was a, that's definitely a concern. Some of these events are one-day events, so they, they're gonna be here throughout the day, not necessarily always staying the night. For like this upcoming tournament, I will be at the REC Center during that time and talking to people, did you stay the night? That's what we, I did last year and kind of got a feel for that. Then, we can also send out a survey to see, are people staying? Where are they staying? We, as a staff, are a little bit maxed out, so it's a little bit hard for us to, you know, we do event, we have to move on because it's, it's every day, every weekend, we have something going on, registration, and just our facility upkeep that we're doing. So, it would be great to have someone that could create surveys, help us with that piece of it, and I don't know, again, that's kind of where maybe economic development can help us with that quantitative, you know, anything coming in to help us understand that a little bit more.
And you talked about the list that Olivia put together for you of places to eat, of places to stay and stuff. Is that at a central location where people can go online to gather this information?
Well, we just received it, you know, after, this week. I would imagine Cedar has it on their website anyway. It's, what they gave me was like a three-page summary, so that gets sent to the organizer, and then we have it at the REC Center and our facilities. We could probably do a link right on our website.
Yeah, it would seem that if you had a summary like that, it might be easier for people to manipulate.
Yeah, we have that capability very, really easy, yeah.
Alderwoman Davis?
But I think it brings up a bigger issue that needs, is being considered by the there, it needs to be continually considered, is what we do losing rooms and meals because those hotels are full from the state when you have events that you're bringing them in, and they're going to Rutland Town, or they're going to Killington or Mendon to spend the night, and we're losing that one.
That is correct. I mean, the, the list that I received from Cedar is, like, the hotels are not always in Rutland. The USA Gymnastics event that we'll be hosting is a two-day event, and that's from, those are gymnasts from all around the state, and they will be staying the night, or Airbnb would be my guess.
That's information I hope that can share to the legislative.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chief Kilcullen with a request for board approval to dispose of city-owned property. A copy of an email with details was placed on your desk.
Hi, thank you. So, this request is to dispose of a two thousand and fourteen Ford Police Interceptor, ten-year-old vehicle with about ninety-five thousand miles on it, first brought into our fleet, as I said, about ten years ago, used for about three years as a frontline patrol vehicle, was repurposed for about seven years and used as our canine vehicle. Currently, it's not inspectable because of rust in the undercarriage, and we're offered a price of twelve hundred dollars as a salvage vehicle from Brown's Auto Salvage. So, my request is permission from the board to, to sell that essentially to Brown's as a salvage vehicle for twelve hundred dollars.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, at this time, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval to sell EQ four-on-four Ford, two thousand and fourteen Ford Police and Interceptor Utility Vehicle for twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars. I swear I saw another zero.
Second.
Bailey Brown hears that.
Do you want to, one second, do you want to combine them both together?
Sure, and then the Ford, the other vehicle at a hundred and twenty-five thousand mile, thousand miles for twelve hundred dollars.
Second.
My question is the money to go to the Equipment Replacement Fund? Is that where the?
Typically, where it goes, yeah, so for the, yes, typically go to the Equipment Replacement Fund.
And so, I'll include that in my motion if I could please, that the money to go to the Equipment Replacement Fund.
All right, so we have a motion to allow the disposal of EQ four-on-four and EQ six-one-four and the funds to go to the Equipment Replacement Fund, and it's been seconded. Chief Kokol?
I'd like to withdraw the request for six-fourteen. It is currently inspected, and so we've got a few more months' use out of it. It's not likely to pass inspection in, in a few months, so I think we might have a use for it for a few months, but it'll probably come back in a few months when, when the, when the inspection's expired. It's not unsafe, but we anticipate some costly repairs that, that we wouldn't be worth putting into once the inspection's up. So, I'd like to withdraw the request for that, for six-fourteen.
I'll amend my motion to only include the interceptor utility for, that has ninety-five thousand miles on it for twelve hundred dollars to the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Is the secondor okay with the amendment?
Well, my question is, why don't we just leave it? And that way, when you're ready to sell it, you can do it. You don't need back for permission. You already got it. Already done. It's up to the motion.
I just think that the board or the treasurer or somebody needs to be aware that it's being sold at X. amount of time.
And it may not, that twelve hundred dollars may change, so if the motion is to accept twelve hundred, it might not.
Secondor agrees. Very good. So, we have a motion to allow the disposal of EQ four-on-four and the funds to go to the Equipment Replacement Fund. Secondor has agreed to the amendment. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Treasurer Markowski with a request for board approval and signatures on the loan documents for the service line inventory loan. A memo and documents were emailed to board members yesterday.
Hi, everybody. This was, I'm sorry that you received this late. The bond bank reviewed the loan on Thursday, so I didn't get the document till late Friday, but I really wanted to get it in because we have already been spending the money and ready to be reimbursed about three hundred and forty thousand so far, so that's why I like to move this along. So, the request is regarding the, the loan for the service line inventory project. For anybody who has had M S K. come to the house, check the service lines, that's what this project is about. this project is about. The loan document agreement is for $800,000. I did check in anticipating maybe some questions on the project and where we stand. The way that the projects are designed by October 24, the city should have the inventory complete and a plan for if you have lead lines that need to be removed. So in speaking with the engineer today, that isn't a problem getting to October, but they, right now, of the 5,600 city service lines, they have been to 3,900, so they're moving along with it, but still quite a bit to go. So I just thought I would share that with the request, so.
Very good. Alderwoman Gillum?
I would like to also make a comment, because I just had mine done, because I actually didn't know where the water line came in, so I got an education. It is, for the people at home, it is very easy. You've got probably a door hanger that came to your house, use that door hanger, call that number, they'll come over, and it takes five minutes to go downstairs, take their pictures, and are off and gone. So if you can't get down where you need to go to take the picture, you can call them, and they'll come and do it. There's no excuse why the taxpayer can't get this done before October.
Very good.
And I'd like to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Very good. So motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion for approval for the loan documents for the service line inventory loan, RF3513-1 in the amount of $800,000, and circulate the document for, for the Board of Aldermen and Treasurer's signatures to be arrested?
Attested.
Attested, thank you, I'm sorry. Attested by city clerk.
Right up there with the $12,000.
Wow, that's right. Right up there with $12,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Human Resources Committee meeting February 1st. A copy of the report is on page 22 of your packet.
Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman McClure. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbet, Attorney LaChance, Alderman Kupaly, Alderman Barbogallo, Treasurer Markowski, Superintendent Kim Peters, Director Tyler Dalen, Assessor Langlois, Director April Choffey, and Alderman McCann. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. Topics for this meeting were the creation of a code of conduct, a code of ethics, and social media policy for Board of Aldermen members. Rutland City currently has a code of ethics from 1982. I presented a new code of conduct and code of ethics that I wrote based on Santa Cruz City Council's Code of Ethics and Conduct. The committee reviewed both documents and made some suggestions. Alderman Kupaly inquired if the Human Resources Committee had considered the state's code of ethics. I confirmed that the HR committee had considered this, and per the Vermont State Code of Ethics passed in 2022, within the first 120 days of public service, a public servant shall engage in a code of conduct training. President Talbet mentioned that VLCT has online trainings. Additionally, the new Human Resources Director could do a training once a year to onboard Board of Aldermen members. The Human Resources Committee agreed to take the 1982 Code of Ethics and the new draft Code of Ethics and Conduct home, and read them, and email me edits, which I will compile for the next HR committee meeting. Friendly reminder to please send me edits if you have copies of those documents, and if you would like copies, I would be happy to send them to you if you are unable to attend that meeting. The Human Resources Committee then considered a social media policy. I presented Rutland Town's social media policy as an example of a robust policy that Rutland City could adopt. Alderman McCann suggested that we add a section on guidelines for elected officials' personal social media to help them understand good practices, especially if they are using their personal accounts for board-related content. Superintendent Peters mentioned that the policy should explicitly state whether comments on posts can be turned off, and it was determined that per the law, they cannot be turned off on public pages. The mayor suggested that when the final version of the social media policy is finished, we should create a summary to put on the first page to make sure it's easily accessible. Rutland City Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics, and Social Media Policy will remain in committee. I will wait for suggestions and then work with the city attorney to draft a new version of these documents to present to the new Human Resources Director and committee for review. The meeting adjourned at 6:19 PM.
Next, Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Board members wish to bring up any unfinished business? Seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? Alderwoman McClure?
I would just like to make all the board members and the folks at home aware that the February Project Vision Meeting will be this Thursday at noon at Calvary Bible Church at One Meadow Lane here in Rutland City, and more information on evening night vision meetings will be, more to come. Thank you.
Alderwoman McCann?
Thanks. I'd like to refer to the Traffic Committee, a discussion of the results from the speed study in front of the, or on Merchant's Row, just to discuss kind of the benefits and actual impacts of traffic calming measures, and how we might be able to use that where it's needed elsewhere in the city.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this traffic study information to the Traffic Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderwoman Tadio?
I just want to mention that in October, Rutland City will be planning to send a delegation of folks to Hanamaki, Japan, and I'm hoping that members of the board will consider attending this delegation. As of right now, Hanamaki has said that they would sponsor five days of us, our lodging and our food. Members of the board would need to pay for their own airfare to get there, but it has been quite a number of years since we've sent a delegation, and it is really important to send delegates of the city, including the mayor, and members of the Board of Aldermen, and members of the school board, to ensure that this tradition continues. And I think that tonight, since we've heard from the students, is a good time to just mention this. We don't need a motion from this, but I just, it's a friendly reminder, you should have gotten an email from Rob Bliss, or it will be coming. Keep your inboxes, keep your eye on your inboxes, because that is coming in October. I believe as of right now, the dates were October 5th through 9th, but we, we will stay in touch with you about that as more information comes out.
Great. Alderwoman Davis?
So it has been a long time. We always had a municipal delegation, not just the kids. School board members would come, school commissioners, the mayor, members of their Board of Aldermen. We had the deer dancers come in and be in the Halloween parade. It was the first time they had ever performed outside of Japan, and it was tremendous. And I think we, we got away from that during administration here. We got away from doing that municipal side, and it would be nice to, I still are on Facebook with some of the folks from Japan that had come over many years ago, and, and it was a great experience to, to have them. We had a, I will say, though, don't eat the cookies, because they gave, they brought us wonderful package, beautiful cookies, and I'm in the chair, and of course, we wanted to share the cookies, and they were as dry as a sole of a shoe. But we all smiled and were gracious, and thank you, said thank you very much for the cookies, and it was, but it was that we, at the time, Mrs. Tuttle was alive, and she held a wonderful dinner for everyone that could attend, and that was, that was very, very nice, because you just got away from the politics, and you got to enjoy each other, and it was pleasant, very nice.
Alderwoman Gillum?
I just want to give you the folks here a little history lesson on how gracious they were during 9/11. Our delegation was in Japan. Mayor Casarino and the city attorney got the first plane out. They were forced down in Hawaii, so they had to stay in Hawaii for a week, and the rest of the delegation was stuck.
It was awful, that's what I heard.
He played a lot of golf. He, they played, they were, the rest of them were stuck in Japan. They picked up to full tab for all the hotel rooms and food for the whole delegation to stay there for another week until they get the first plane out of Japan. They were very gracious of taking care of our people over there, so they are very nice. It's a very good trip if you folks want to go. I think you should go, because I went. It's very, very interesting, the technology that they're using on transportation, on communications, public safety. They're way ahead of us on public safety. It's just incredible stuff, and we learned a lot, and that's where we got most of the train rail stuff information when we were doing the rail yard here, because we wanted to do a container service, and we got that idea from them, because they have a great transportation system on moving freight very easily, and it's only like two people unloading a train, which is really incredible. So I think you should take the chance to go, it's worth the effort, so.
Very good.
I've already been, I think somebody else should go, for sure.
Thank you. Any further miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.